I'll now call to order the September sixteenth, twenty twenty five special school board meeting. A study session of the Stanwood Camano School District Board of Directors. All four of our current directors are present. Director Evans, Director Murray, Director King, and Director Schreiber. Would you join me for the flag split?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the agenda before you for the September sixteenth, twenty twenty five special school board meeting study session. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the September sixteenth, twenty twenty five special school board meeting study session?
So moved.
Moved by Director King.
Second.
Seconded by Director Evans. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. The agenda has been approved. Today we will be discussing a potential capital levy. I'll now turn it over to Superintendent Overnell and the Executive Director of Business Services, Ruth Floyd.
Thank you for that. And thanks everyone for being here. We're here today to outline what the district is thinking and the approach to explore a potential capital levy in the near future. So our purpose is to ensure that the Board of Directors and community for that matter is well informed of the financial implications, the financial landscape, the infrastructure that's is needed and the approach that has been taken so far with regard to community engagement. So we are committed to preparing our students for the future of their choice and that drives this work when we think about future. I just want to lean into that word as well. In front of you today, you have a packet and we chose to do a packet so that you have it to reference. And you write notes or whatever you need to do on it. But you'll notice Ruth Floyd is here and Evan Caldwell to add into the conversation as well and answer questions. And we'll go ahead and start there. So you can see that the outline on the first page, you've probably already glanced through, kind of brings us through the budget scenario, potential capital projects that we've already looked at, the levy scenario overview, what we've done with community stakeholders, and then at the end, recommendation. So on the first slide, and you can see that starting on slide three, they're numbered in the upper left-hand corner so that you can reference what slide we're talking about when we're there. But just to pause on the future ready graduates like I talked about, which would be on slide two, bottom of the second page. And I just want to linger on the word future. It's important to discuss the history of us having a capital projects and technology levy until two thousand and twenty-two, when support was rejected from the voters for maintaining that capital levy. And you'll hear us talk tonight about what the implications of that have been for us and what that might look like in the future. So with that, we'll start on slide three and discuss the current capital fund balance with Ruth Floyd.
Slide three, you can see there that as of July thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, the Capital Projects Fund had approximately three point five million dollars available. And this is four additional projects. However, we have set aside about a million for future emergency needs such as a boiler or a roof failure so that we don't get caught off guard and not have the ability to respond quickly to an event such as that. The remainder of the projects, two point five million, could be projects needed prior to the potential approval of this levy and before those levy funds start to come into the district, which wouldn't be until spring of two thousand and twenty-seven.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So it says state match fund available. So are those funds already in there or like do we have to spend the million dollars to get the million dollars? Or have they already matched those for something we already spent?
We, those were matching dollars for the high school, the Stanwood High School project. And so we already have those dollars.
We physically have those in them, okay.
We physically have them in the fund balance currently, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions about current status of the budget and capital projects fund?
I'll just add that there, this summer, as was reported, we've kind of ticked through and are bringing to finalization several projects that were identified by CFAC and were on the list that were approved last year. And there are several more projects that we've already prioritized for specifically the levy funds available that are in the hopper and ready to be bid later this year and next summer.
But the two point five million that's available, that doesn't include like the transportation that we've already paid for that.
We've already taken that out.
Okay, so anything that we've already earmarked and approved are already encumbered and they're not in that two point five, okay.
Those are encumbered.
Just wanted to make sure I understood that right.
Yes.
I'm going to go down a rabbit hole, but how many of the projects that we are looking to bid out here in the near future are related to protecting our buildings from freezing weather and things that are coming?
I'm thinking of four projects that are on the next up list and none of them are directly related to HVAC systems or weatherproofing the envelope. I can give an example of the first one that was already bid and pushed back till next year. And that's the Twin City Elementary retaining wall and stairs. That's up and ready to go. Fire system would be next. So nothing related to the envelope or HVAC control specifically.
Then we're good in that area for the time being?
Yes, yes, significant progress. And by the time, you know, there's a, that is critical, we expect that that's the case.
The project that Jeff was talking about, the negative pressure for Utsalati, that's included already outside of the two point five, yeah.
Outside of this, yep, that's in progress.
To your point, like some of those projects are in that stuff that's already been covered, yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to, you got, I literally sure it was a list to go with the dollars and where they are.
You have, we have, we have encumbered the Utsalati weatherization project for, I believe this was three hundred thousand dollars. And we would come back to you if there was a need to increase that to continue on with additional change orders. But right now, we're meeting that budget. And the work continues. We need to wait until, we needed to wait till the boilers came back on to do some additional, some additional sensor and any pressure testing. Working through that project still.
All right. Slide four, current general fund reserve. We talk about, and you can see, you've seen this slide before, especially during the budget discussion. And you can see that the fund balance has been decreasing. However, note that during two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-three, we had significant funds from the federal government to help us through COVID. And so that's why the fund balance had increased somewhat during that period. And then we've been spending that down. The additional reductions that we've made, as you know, capital projects fund can't pay for general operating costs. However, the general fund has supported capital and technology costs for the past three years, including things like technology devices and software subscriptions. And these, this has created the need for additional reductions in general fund. And so we just want to be clear that some of this need for reductions is not only because of our operating costs, but also the need to pick up the costs that the levy that wasn't passed needed to pick up some of those costs that were required for the district to continue.
And just to clarify, you have the note up here, but we talked about this on our CFAC meeting the other day. There's no technology funds left. It's all just capital projects from that prior levy, right?
In the capital balance, there are no technology funds left.
Yes, so anything that we spend on technology comes out of our general.
Correct.
Okay. Just making sure I remember correctly.
And is that the, sorry, you know, it's on the agenda too, is that the, those, the dollars that were paying for additional Chromebooks, is that coming out of the general fund or is that coming out of?
General fund.
As they go end of life, we are setting a certain fund dollars to.
So the four, four hundred, I think it was, four hundred Chromebooks that we're buying are coming out of the general fund. That's for sure, correct, okay, got you.
Actually, since, since two thousand and twenty-three. Okay, thank you. Slide five captures what is on the back two pages, actually. This is a screenshot of the actual sheets that we used to identify potential projects. And so one of the, just part of the systematic approach that was taken, identified and prioritized potential project needs. Input came from multiple sources, including our CFAC committee, our capital facilities advisory committee, more recently, our budget advisory committee, facilities teams within the district, building leaders from within the district and community feedback as well through those different teams. Projects fall or fell into several different categories, including infrastructure, safety, and some technology needs. Most of the technology can actually be probably grouped into the infrastructure and/or safety needs as well when we talk about server replacement, filters. That infrastructure could be grouped there as well. And they all align with both student learning and operational efficiency. So the Google sheet that's linked at the back or copied on the back is a living document. I want to point out a couple of things that you'll notice if you, if you look at these last couple of pages. You'll see that they're grouped by building. So these were projects that building leaders in our facilities team said are critical. And I would argue that some have been delayed since two thousand and twenty-three, since the failure of the last levy. As well as we have some of the very back two pages that fall under, you'll see MTC, that's the Maintenance and Technology Center, District Office and Transportation. So this is not the full sheet. This is part of the sheet and you can see in dark on the right-hand column, it's the two hundred, it's two thousand and twenty-five estimated costs. So these dollars that you see on the right-hand side and the total at the bottom of the last page are today's dollars. We've already done the work to escalate those costs over four years when we would start to receive the funding, starting in two thousand and twenty-seven. And also done some work to prioritize what projects would go in what years based on both need and adjustment because of the rate. So like I said, these, these projects that are identified are estimated costs in today's dollars that we've done some work to extrapolate out based on inflationary, predicted inflationary costs over time. Any questions about either of these two sheets or the projects that you see on there or a gap in the projects?
How many Chromebooks are being replaced at MTC?
So the Chromebooks that are being replaced at the MTC, under that category, we budgeted for about eight hundred a year. We actually extended the life of our Chromebooks out two additional years when Google said, we'll keep them end of life for two additional years, two years ago. So we budget for about eight hundred a year. That gets us, you know, thirty-two hundred over the four-year course of the levy potentially. That's not all of the Chromebooks we have. So we do a lot of repair and maintenance on, on the Chromebooks to try and keep them end of life. So, so right now, they can be updated for seven years is what Google allows. So about eight hundred a year is the short answer. Yes.
About how many are lost and how many are too early made non-functional by damage? What are, of the eight hundred, what's just normal timing out and what are?
I don't have that number in front of me. We do assess fines on those that are damaged beyond repair and recover the fines that we're able to, to replace Chromebooks. So that happens. We have an amazing team at the MTC and a technology department that can fix things that I wouldn't think could be fixed, honestly. So they're going past the update time though. The effect matters in seven years, as you know. Just the, just the physical, you know, device in itself starts to break down.
And those are lost, how, how much of those are, do we recover from the families?
We, the fee is based on the replacement cost.
But what, I mean, some of them aren't, aren't going to be able to pay or whatever. So how many don't?
Yeah, I, I don't know that I have a number that would be accurate on that. I know our staff do a great job of trying to remind and recover and see if it's under the bed and that kind of thing, you know, as we.
Is it sort of like school lunches where there's a certain block that haven't paid their, what they're due?
Yes.
With the L.
Yes, and those, those are, those fees and fines are maintained. And because our last levy was a capital projects and technology levy named in it and kind of identified that fifty-fifty split, that is a part of this levy, but I'd really like to focus on the factors that are in here in addition to the devices themselves, focusing on, on safety and infrastructure along with some capital, capital projects.
Slide six, actually, I'll be talking about slides six through eight. There are a series of graphs that look very similar. And in general, it's the estimated tax rates if the proposed levy is approved, but it also provides historical tax rate, or a graph of the historical landscape as well. You can see the prior capital levies in the darker blue. And then there's the dip that starts in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-two. And then the proposed levy would be twenty twenty-seven, twenty thirty. And there's three different scenarios or options for you to consider. Page on slide six, option one is assuming that there is a flat amount collected each year with increases for inflation. So the, so the amounts for option one are fairly stable. They just have an inflationary for years two through four. And then option two on slide seven is assuming a low initial amount to try and keep that two thousand and twenty-seven total tax rate down a bit. And then, and then increased in years two through four with some inflation. And then option three, which as you can see was actually preferred by the CFAC, CFAC team that met last week. This is assuming a low initial amount in year one and then the remaining years have varying amounts levied to target a flat total tax rate.
Can you remind me what that total tax rate was?
It's, it's estimated currently, if assuming that assessed value goes decreases this coming year at two eighty-five.
Okay, I just wanted to see where they put it.
Yeah, and this, the next slide is how we compare in two thousand and twenty-five to current, to other districts in our region. And you can see that in two thousand and twenty-five, our total tax rate was two dollars and twenty-one cents. And we're in the lower quarter of the other schools for their rates also in two thousand and twenty-five. And so when you hear the two, two eighty-five, that isn't really apples to apples because we're not talking about the same year with the same assessed value. And as we've talked about before, if assessed value goes up when you have a levy of the same dollar amount that you're collecting, that rate goes down. And if the assessed value goes down, then the rate goes up.
It's like a, it's like a seesaw, right?
It is like a seesaw. And so you could see me doing a seesaw.
But there is an inflation adjustment built into that?
There is an inflation adjustment built into our projections for the costs of these costs. It's actually six years' worth of inflation because the list that you have is, is current estimates. And then we need to project to the beginning of the levy, two thousand and twenty-seven, and two thousand and twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-nine, two thousand and thirty. So yes, there is inflationary factors.
And is that the Bureau of Livestream Statistics inflation amount or something else?
Well, it's fairly standard to use about a five percent increase for construction costs each year, which is higher than a standard, what we would want inflation to be. But sometimes construction costs increase more than, than expected. And there's also a little bit extra for things that might come at us in the next year or so related to tariffs and those kinds of things. And so there is, the inflation factor is a bit higher for the first couple of years because of that concern over tariffs and so on.
Are there any questions about slide six, seven, or eight? One thing I'd like to point out, and you could, you could look at slide eight, and that is, that is the absence, of course, in twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six of the dark blue top, which would be the, the capital levy if we, you know, if we choose to call it that. And the other thing I'd like to point out by the bottom dotted line is that the proposed rate would fall, would come in below where we left off with the rate in two thousand and twenty-two. So it's lower than when the voters rejected the levy last time. And that, that does include both the bond, the EPNO levy, and the proposed capital levy in and of itself.
What, when has the EPNO levy been through?
We can, we collect in two thousand and twenty-eight, so we'd have to go to the voters in two thousand and twenty-eight to start a new one in two thousand and twenty-nine. So a two-year cycle is what we're shooting for.
Right.
Any questions about those options?
Okay, and slide ten is a snapshot of the August levies that were out for school districts. And you can see, there's only one that's a capital, capital levy and for a smaller district, but it is representative of that. April had more mixed reviews, I would say, still passing more than not among the levies. And the ones on the bottom are actually some larger districts all passing the EPNO levies that they, that they ran. So we thought it'd be important to, to add kind of current status of what has happened over the last couple of months with regard to levies.
I think in the CFAC meeting, we also, by we, I mean we, asked how many levies we thought would be on the November ballot and we said maybe ten?
It was ten to twelve somewhere.
Ten to twelve that we currently established, okay.
And more every day. There, the news today from across the state actually promoted several levies in Spokane, Deer Park. So they're starting to publicize them and we'll have more that we will potentially be on the ballot with.
Okay.
And what other levies are likely to be in the same election for us? You know, that will be on our district, people's ballot.
That's a great segue to the next slide, slide eleven. And that's on the critical dates for, for the levies. You can see here, all those small, so I'll go ahead and call it out. We have some defined dates that we need to determine if, if and when we're going to run the levy. So if we're going to run on a February ballot, that, that February election date, December tenth, two thousand and twenty-six, we would have to have a resolution filed by December twelfth. So can't really answer that question until, until that date, December twelfth. The mail-in date would be January twenty-third and the certification would be on February twentieth. Now, I, I give the December twelfth date being the very last critical date that the resolution could be filed. However, in our experience, and I think anyone that is giving information about a levy, we would want to start, you know, before that clearly.
I'm not sure that answered his question, I don't know.
I think it's too early to tell how many school districts would be on the ballot, however.
Director King, were you talking about how many other school districts would be on the same election cycle? Or are we talking about other levies potentially, like fire, city?
Yes, exactly, yeah, that will be on the, the.
Other county levies that could potentially be in conflict with us trying to get ours passed.
Yeah.
Not just exactly con, conflict, but just, that's too much.
Right, right.
You know.
And I imagine everybody has a similar timeframe and it would still be too early to tell on those too, right?
Too, too early to tell. And also in talking with other agencies, I guess I'll say, that their cycle may be more frequent than the two years and not necessarily paired up with the February run or the November run. For instance, we saw, we saw a levy on Camero Island in August, which is, you know, typical for that, for that one. So not only are they dispersed throughout the year, they're also spread over the, the different cycles within the year. They, I've had those conversations, if that's what you're asking, with, with some of the agencies. And, and I don't know if there's an interest in, in a way to coordinate when we run with the agencies. I think agencies are running when they feel it is, you know, needed and, and less about syncing up with other districts or agencies.
I see it problematic if we don't have some information around other agencies that could be potentially running at the same time. We saw that happen this last year with the Port of Everett and the city of Everett's levy law happening in the same election cycle. And neither one of them went anywhere. I think it was a waste of time.
Yeah, definitely, you know, definitely something to consider. Just the feedback I got from some of the individuals that kind of make those decisions are, we're not waiting for anyone, we're going to do it when, you know, when the funding's needed. And so for us to, to wait could be problematic.
Yeah, I'm not saying necessarily us waiting, but we need to be very cognizant of the environment that we're going into.
For example, we, we know that our February and November, right? February is most successful for us, so we're not going to put a, we don't have plans right now to put anything on the ballot in August, for instance, because it's generally not as successful.
What other agencies, like those kind of? What other agencies, like North County Fire, et cetera, might have a levy? I mean, let's, we have an inventory if possible, once it could be on the ballot.
Both Fire agencies in our area just recently ran and passed their local levies. So, don't think they're outrunning again.
There'll be an EMS.
In three years.
There'll be an EMS in three years?
Yeah.
Okay. For Camino Island?
No, for North County. It's a six-year cycle, and they offset it three years.
That leaves the city as the other thing that we probably should just triple check that I have heard, to my knowledge, they're doing.
Yeah, and what might they do for what kind of, how big, whatever? But that would be only other ones. So, we're okay as far as the Fire, et cetera, as it sounds like.
For North County, we have Camino Fire as well.
They just recently did one.
Yeah.
They have a tendency to run theirs in August.
Right.
Yeah, we don't have a plan right now. It's good thinking.
We will, yeah, but we will definitely pull an inventory. I meet with the city quarterly, so I'll, I'll ask the question. We know about North County now and then Camino Fire as well. So, we could, we could broaden the scope too outside of that if we, if we need to do that, find that information.
I would just probably check with Swan Beach County and, I mean, a lot of the municipalities have been, or have been considering levy less because of funding. So, I think we just need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence.
Sure, okay. We will query that, those counties as well. Evan, do you want to talk about next? Slide 12. Good segue.
For that one, for sure. Like, we've been, as you know, we've been serving the community now three years in a row, so we have good data points and trends. And as you can see on some of the stats here is showing the responses are indicating that they recognize the financial strain that school districts are having. And the increasing response that funding changes and the need for more funding are one of the top areas. So, you've seen that tick up over the last few years. And the change that, in their response to property taxes versus, you know, three, two years ago, saying that they were too high, 54% saying they're too high. And then in March, it was down to 24% saying it's too high. So, a lot of the data kind of aligns to show that people recognize that schools are going to, are under financial strain and are going to explore some options. So, the ingredients are there to potentially ask them to see if they would be willing to support a levy like this. And it's just a snapshot of some of the surveys that we looked at in March, but any questions about some of the, some of the data? And then slide 13 would just be a snapshot of how we would go through our levy communication timeline. It would mirror our EPNO levy that ran during the same time. We'd launch a levy website that was full of facts and figures that we would constantly push people back to if they had questions or more information. We would launch off with staff presentations. We found that informing our staff with some facts and figures that they had proved really powerful because they were the point of contact for a lot of people in our community. And so, they had answers to give rather than just a website to, to point out or more fearfully, "I don't know." It was, it proved really useful and I think powerful to kind of smack down some rumors that could pop out there in the community. And then we would launch our community presentations, both in person and online. And we have a multi-week messaging campaign. We would launch kind of one, once a week, we would hit on topics of, you know, older home people, and then we'd kind of circle back to some of the main points. And then end with, you know, how to vote and where to vote and some of the voting options and effort people, including the, trying to be clear now, the retirees.
Exemptions?
Exemptions for low-income seniors that are out there that shockingly few take advantage of, and the counties estimate a whole bunch of people taking advantage of the COVID system. So, educating people like that. We did it twice during the EPNO levy, and we had people actually register at the event and were very established. Any questions about some of the levy communication plans?
And by how to vote, like, how to vote, not like vote yes or no?
Correct.
Where to vote and how to vote. This is there, and I'm telling people how to vote or instructing them where and how to vote.
And pointing them to vote.law.gov, which is great at telling them how to register. And then more importantly, you can track your ballot, so you can put it in the mail or in the Dropbox, see that it's been collected, make sure that it's voted. So, educating people just how the process works. It proved useful. We, I, just to circle back to the EPNO, and we did have the highest voter turnout of all the school districts. So, I'm going to try and.
That's something to say.
All those students. About what school district?
In Silver County, the ones we kind of tracked.
Not the state, huh?
I don't have the time to track down all the data of all 295 school districts, but I'll stick to those in our area.
It's a good goal.
It is a good point.
Are there any questions on slides one through 13 before we move on? So, slide 14 brings a recommendation, and it's based on the analysis and input from CFA, CBAC, community partners, staff. The recommendation would be moving forward with preparing a resolution for a levy, a capital levy, which projects a flat tax rate over the life of the measure. The reason I add that and that we've highlighted it earlier is within Stanley Camino, that is something that the voters have said over time, is that we are interested in having our, our tax rate as level as possible over the, over the life of the levies and bonds. And so, it's to establish that, moving, keep that moving forward.
I'd like some clarification of the three options.
Sure.
And so, first, you know, let's assume a, some middle, middle-level house financially, and its current property tax under the three options, let's say, let's say, give it a round number, say 100,000, which is not realistic, but easy to work with.
Okay.
And then what would the tax be on that each year roughly, the three options? Because I didn't understand the third, how the third works, actually.
Okay, so the third option is the only option where the rate is projected to be the same each of the four, total rate?
Total rate. So, the, this levy would flex in order to make the total rate flat because of the bonds, the bond amount is different every year and the EPNO amount is different.
Okay, so then the federal tax rate would be different each year to come out, the average is the same?
Yeah, so the, the, you authorize a resolution based on a dollar amount, and we estimate a rate. But the rate changes like we talked about. It's the dollar amount that's approved, and it's the dollar amount that the voters approve. But we would, we would target a flat total rate, meaning the dollar amount that we collect on this levy goes up and down based on all of the other things that we levy for, including bond and EPNO levy, in order to keep the rate, total rate approximately flat throughout the four years.
And also in the discussion, I think it was mentioned that the third option gave our money up in the first year, but?
Second year, year two. 2028.
Okay, so it's, so, and if, so the year one would be sort of like if it was constant for all, all four years or, or what?
Year one would be a smaller amount, and you can see that on slide eight. Year one would be a smaller amount because the bond, there's an increase in the bond amount as well as EPNO inflation and so on that we've talked about. And so, there's less room in order to have that flat tax rate. So, we would have a small amount in 2027, and then it, it would increase quite a bit in 2028 because there's a drop-off in the amount that the bond, that we have to pay for bond, principal, and interest. So, bond principal payment schedule dips in 2028, leaving room to levy more for this capital levy and still maintain a flat tax, total tax rate. So, that's the idea, is to kind of fill up those, those amounts so that the total tax rate is flat.
The discussion was like having a lump sum earlier, like, I think it was in the CPEC who said it, it's not the first year, but it's the second year, but you're getting a larger amount, so you could maybe do more projects that second year and not have as far out of inflation on some of those projects. I think that was part of the discussion that we had in the CPEC, CBAC meeting about that bubble of money in the second year, creating maybe a win inflationarily wise.
Out of curiosity, how long is the bond? The bonds were 20 years, and so, 20.
So, we're dead.
Seventeen, so 2047 to 2048, somewhere in there, sorry, 20 years. So, 2037, 2038. However, they're structured in such a way that there's no principal payment on one of the bonds for several years, which provides this opportunity to fill it up with our levy.
When do those points of voting start, do you know?
When, do they restart?
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't have that schedule in front of me.
But I'm guessing that's what accounts for that difference between where we were when we had the levy before and where we are starting now?
That, a lot, some of that is assessed value going down, going up by law.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So, your recommendation is, so the recommendation that you're saying you would like to bring to the board is rate option three.
Correct.
For us to file, like, as our resolution.
Correct. That's based on the feedback, not only from CFA, CBAC, but, but.
The community over the years, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay. Do you have any other advisors for any input?
We won't put you on the spot too much here right now. Any questions?
So, do we have consensus for option three to put that on the ballot in February? Where they can begin drafting the resolution? Any objection to putting it on the ballot for February, option three? And I guess we can move forward with that then with the staff. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We'll work on that right away.
We anticipate a resolution with O U in the second meeting of option two.
Thank you.
And a question. How does the, the amount of the bond that we produce, is that?
The amount of the levy?
Yeah.
Well, the, the.
The bottom line of that?
This isn't today's value though, so we would, we would.
Across the four years, it is about $18 million, give or take.
So, it's that plus inflation?
Yes.
After all those critical projects?
Yes. And that's a good point. These are critical projects. There, we, we went with it, we framed it as needs not wants because, you know, where we were last time.
And a lot of these are actually on the same list that we sort of said, "Sorry, not sorry," to get to the 2.5 that we have now, right?
Correct.
Like, when we ruled out some other projects, some of these same things were on there.
Some of the same things were on there.
Deferred.
Deferred, correct.
Deferred meetings.
Correct.
I want to thank staff for their time to prepare this and all the directors for considering this. And if there's no further business, the September 16th, 2025 special school board meeting study session is adjourned.